Ms. Bush, where is my gavel? The July 23, 2019 Clay County School Board Special Meeting will come to order. This is a hearing on the adoption of the recommended order and on the filed exceptions to that order in the case of Abby Andrews, Easter Brown, Cherry Deaton, Donna Foster, and Danielle Peracelli versus the Clay County School Board. The petitioners, the teachers, are represented by attorney H.B. Stivers. The respondent's school district is represented today by attorney Nicole Smith and not Leonard Deaton. Okay. The process will be as follows. Now I can gavel. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes to make an opening statement. Petitioner will go first. Each side will present their exceptions one at a time. The petitioner's attorney will go first. He will, she will present, he or she will present his argument on his exception. He will have five minutes to do so. The respondent will then be allowed five minutes to respond to petitioner's presentation on exception one. After each side has given their presentation on the exception, the board may ask questions of each side on the exception that is being presented. After questions, if any, the chair will open the floor for motions by the board members. The board can move to overrule or deny the exception, in which case no explanation is needed. The exception is rejected. The board can move to sustain or accept the exception. This acts to reject a portion of the judge's recommended order. In that case, the board mover must state its reason for rejecting or modifying the order and why its interpretation is more reasonable than the one which is rejected. The process will be repeated for petitioner's exceptions two, three, four, five. The process is then repeated for the respondent's exceptions one and two, with the attorney for the respondent taking the lead and the petitioner's attorney answering the argument. When all exceptions are heard and ruled on by the board, the hearing will be terminated and the process of rewriting the recommended order to create the final order, which includes all of the board, school board rulings, will take place. That process is handled by the board attorney and may take several days. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The public may attend but may not participate. No public comment will be allowed either before, during, or after the hearing. Is everyone ready to proceed? Does either counsel for the parties have any questions as to the procedure? No? Okay. Mr. Stivers, you may give your opening argument. And have you got a timer? Okay. This is 15 minutes. And make sure the mic is on.
Oh, okay. As I am representing the petitioners in this matter, I can say this is a little bit different. This has been a case that's been a little bit different than many others that we have handled over the numerous years, one of which in working with Nicole. And as you've read and looking at the record, we were able to agree on basically about 85 to 90 percent of the facts. This is not a case where a lot of facts were in dispute. What was in dispute is the interpretation of the state statute. Both, I think the administrative law judge did a good job explaining both sides' position. I think positions, of course, I'm here with the fact that I believe our position is stronger. But for three of the petitioners, the administrative law judge didn't agree with it. And I think the argument was twofold. One is that the additional requirement of being a classroom teacher at the time of the award, although that was present in the, or what we call the best and brightest scholarships, was not a requirement for what we also refer to as the smaller best and brightest scholarships. Now, the legislature did change that fact, that now you're eligible for the large scholarship as long as you remain employed in the district. Nothing was changed to the smaller scholarships. Two reasons why. Either one, first, it either wasn't a requirement in the first place, and the legislature didn't think it needed change. We don't know the answer to that. Or...
I'm going to need you to use the microphone because it's being recorded and I can't record you if you don't.
Just, it's the...
I'm sorry, I thought it was on. Is it on now?
Speaking to the mic...
Is it on now?
Yeah, stop the clock for, we don't want to get into his time.
Oh, that's okay.
Now, see.
Now?
Yes.
That's better, okay. Just to keep you guys from being too bored, I'm not going to start over. And so what we're really dealing with is that interpretation of the statute. It's our position that because of the way the language used by the legislature, in fact, the beginning, the first word of the applicable part of the statute says "notwithstanding anything else in this subsection." Well, that kind of means to me that no matter what it said prior to, this is what the requirements are for this award for the scholarship. Now, a couple of things to address, because I don't want to get into all of the legal, you're going to hear that in a little bit. But I think there's a couple, what I'm going to deem preliminary matters that I'd like to address. First, Mr. Bickner shared with us the memorandum that he sent out, I believe it was late last week, giving you different, you know, what the process is for doing those. And quite honestly, in almost 30 years of doing that, that's the first time I've seen a school board attorney do that to the school board. So it was very informative. I think there is one issue that we have that, under the statute that brought us all together this afternoon, the statute reads that the agency must enter this final order 90 days within the time period of the administrative law judge entering the recommended order. The recommended order in this matter was entered on March 18th. 90 days is June 16th. We're here on July 23rd, which is 127 days. So we're beyond the statutory requirement that this board act. I think that part, you know, my position would be, although it's unclear in reading the statute, in reading the case law interpreting it, what's the remedy for that violation? I would propose that the petitioner should be entitled to the relief they sought in their petition because the board failed to act within the time period that it was required to act by the statute. One of the, one other aspect that was in, that was not in the memorandum, because again, it's unclear on how it is going to be interpreted because it's new. During the last legislative session, or during the last election, there was an amendment to the Florida Constitution. And that amendment reads, "In interpreting a state statute or rule, a state court or an officer hearing an administrative action pursuant to general law may not defer to an administrative agency's interpretation of the statute or rule and must instead interpret the statute or rule de novo." In other words, the deference that has been given in the past to administrative agencies and their ability to deal and address with statutes and rules that they are obligated to follow is not given deference any longer. So in other words, when the administrative law judge is reviewing and entering his recommended order, he's doing so from a blank slate, and he's interpreting the statute as he sees fit. There is no deference given to an agency. And Bruce, I have, if I may, Bruce.
There is.
And just as an example, this is the most recent case that I could find that was interpreting this new constitutional amendment, and it came, comes from the First District Court of Appeal out of Tallahassee and was dated April 26th of 2019. And on page 11 of that opinion, it's highlighted where, and it reads, "But the administrative law judge judges deference to agency interpretation was an error. Based on the clear and unambiguous language of the statute, the agency was required to adopt a rule setting forth a methodology by which it did Medicaid reimbursements. Under the new constitutional amendment, appellate courts no longer defer to agency interpretation. Rather, a de novo standard of review applies." My position being that I think that one of the issues that were raised in the exceptions is give deference to the agency because they do, because they are charged with what it, what used to be the law of substantive jurisdiction. Now, the review is just de novo from a blank slate, so that you don't get that deference that is provided by the statute. Lastly, it is our position, of course, and we, that you've heard in the exceptions, that the statute is clear. When you read it, the language in it, in and of itself, a clear reading of the term "just notwithstanding" tells you that not all of the statute applies, and the additional requirements of remaining employed, test scores, et cetera, do not apply to the small scholarship. One other consideration is, is, you know, we're talking about five petitioners. We're talking about a total of $1,200 apiece. We have jumped through hoops and fought about this, and I know the, I know the petitioners have expended funds, and I know the school board has extended funds. And quite frankly, if you do the math, we're really fighting over $6,000.
Mrs. Smith, you may give your opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Nicole Smith with Runbacher, Kirk &amp; Caldwell. We've had the pleasure of representing the district in the statewide litigation regarding the Best and Brightest program. Needless to say, the Best and the Brightest may have been an ill-thought-out program from day one, but please know that's not why we're here today. I know a lot of us probably have opinions as to the program itself, but let's try to narrow and focus what we're here today about. So my firm was the superintendent's designee as a part of these administrative proceedings. And what we argued to the administrative law judge was twofold. One was that a plain reading of the statute requires that the individual must be a classroom teacher at the time of the award. So it's important to note on that first issue, from day one, board staff, Ms. Brenda Troutman, who is the Director of Instructional Services, she takes a look at the statute for that year, and she read it, and she read that that $1,200 had to go to individuals who were classroom teachers at the time of the award. Ms. Troutman also spoke to Mr. Broski. He agreed with Ms. Troutman. They also checked with Superintendent Davis to make sure that the reading of the statute that they had was indeed accurate. So that's where this all began, was the notion that the statute requires that in order for an individual to receive that $1,200 award, what we call the smaller award, one must be a classroom teacher at the time of the award. So then, since that time, they also checked with outside counsel, the former general counsel for the, the school board, and then with our firm, and now with the administrative law judge. So this question has already gone through several readings. Several folks have analyzed this issue, and I mean, no disrespect, I have the utmost respect for my esteemed opposing counsel, but their reading of the statute is incorrect. And that's why we ask today that the board adopt the administrative law judge's finding or conclusion of law, rather, that one must have been a classroom teacher during the time of the award. And we'll go through all of the, you know, legal wranglings during the exceptions, so I won't get into that now. But that's the first issue that we're here on. And then the section, second issue we're here on is, okay, assuming that's true, that one had to be a classroom teacher at the time of the award, the second issue that we posed to the administrative law judge is, were these five petitioners indeed classroom teachers during the 2017 Best and Brightest Scholarship Award Program? And when I say classroom teacher, well, again, we'll get into the nitty-gritty, but classroom teacher is statutorily defined. You know, you and I, all of us may have an idea of what it means to be a classroom teacher. I know many of you have been classroom teachers. And nothing during this entire process, or what is said today, in any way diminishes from the value of the five petitioners that brought this petition. I met them all during the course of these proceedings. They are all intelligent, fine teachers, educators. So please do not in any way believe that that is, you know, what our goal was today, to diminish what these ladies do for the district. Ms. Troutman, during the hearing, testified herself that if it was up to her, she would give every single one of these five petitioners the $1,200. But that's not why we're here. Why we're here today is to take a look at the statute and to confirm that the administrative law judge was correct in his interpretation, which was the school district's interpretation as well, that one must have been a classroom teacher at the time of the award as defined by the statute. So that is what we're asking today, is that the board adopt that conclusion of law. And then we are also asking that the board modify the recommendation as to two of the petitioners, because even though the judge agreed with us as to our reading of the statute, the judge concluded, we believe, in error, not based on competent substantial evidence, that two of the petitioners, specifically Ms. Peracelli and Ms. Brown, that they were entitled to the award. So that's our position today. I wanted to briefly, however, address just a couple of the issues that were raised by petitioner's counsel. The first is the timing, the 90 days. Obviously, I think we all agree that this board needs to enter a final order. I don't see logistically how either side would get any relief if the board does not act. I don't believe that there's been any waiver. I don't believe that there's been any sort of motion filed before this day that would require us not to proceed and to act according to what the board's duties are under the law. So that's the first issue. The second issue is, upon first view, this might indeed appear to be just a case over $6,000. And we've had this conversation numerous times, because certainly, you know, no school board wants to waste valuable funds that should go to educating its students on silly lawsuits. But what the board needs to also consider today is the presidential value of what this case means. And by that, what I mean is that every single teacher who was in the same situation that these petitioners were in back in 2017 can now bring a suit if this board were to reverse the administrative law judge's finding and read the statute to say what the petitioners hold. So it is not just about $6,000. It is about every other teacher, both for the 2017 award and for the 2018 award, who will then make a claim against the board for the amounts that they believe are due. And again, $1,200 doesn't seem like a lot, but I can tell you during the 2017 program, we had about 2,000 applications. So even if we assume for a moment that only 10% of those folks, you know, would have a claim for the award, you can see the money adds up. And again, it's not whether the board wants to award the money, or I want to award the money, or Mr. Stivers want to award the money. It's, does the law provide that we can award the money? So if the board finds today that the petitioner's position is correct, and then these additional folks can bring claims for this $1,200 award, again, we don't know exact number, then we will be in a situation where the board will have obligated itself to make those payments, not just to the petitioners, but to every other similarly situated teacher in the district. And the problem is, as far as the state is concerned, they're not going to pay that money. Ms. Troutman testified that once the applications were submitted to the state, the list of eligible names, then it closed down, and that the memos from the state made clear that you can't submit after the fact late submissions. We've seen the state auditor general go after several districts to repay the money. I know that this district, in fact, was trying to take care of its pre-kindergarten teachers and make sure that they got compensated, and the state auditor dinged you and said that $31,000 and change was not properly paid under the statute. So there is, there are consequences, is what I'm trying to communicate to you, as much as you may want to award these folks the $1,200 and as fine of educators as they are, just to keep that in mind as we proceed today. Thanks.
Mr. Stivers, you may present your exception one. Five minutes.
The first exception that we filed goes to the findings of fact in paragraph number 31. And I think it is, it was accepted, not necessarily that we disagree with what the administrative law judge has said, but we wanted it to read clearly. The administrative law judge, and you can see in the exceptions, that it says, "The school board also points out that unlike a classroom teacher, an ESE support facilitator is not required to be certified in field for the position." Well, I think that that's an incorrect statement, because an ESE support facilitator must have the ESE certification. And I think that that's supported by the record. Every one of these petitioners in the record were certified as ESE. I think what the administrative law judge was getting to, quite frankly, was the fact that they're not cert, they don't have to be certified to teach math, history, or whatever it is they may be teaching. And that was the purpose of the, of the exception, was to make sure that this portion of the record and of the recommended order reads correctly, that these petitioners are in fact certified for the positions that they hold.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. We don't quarrel with the fact that the five petitioners are indeed certified educators. I think the distinction that the ALJ, the administrative law judge, was making based upon the competent substantial evidence was that ESE support facilitators need not be certified in that particular field that they are pushing into. So for example, if they are pushing into a math class, they need not be certified in math. And Ms. Troutman testified regarding the job description of a classroom teacher versus a job description of an ESE support facilitator. And that distinction is that the classroom teacher job description does indeed require the classroom teacher to be certified in the particular field, whereas an ESE support facilitator need not be certified in the particular field. Thank you.
Bringing it back to the board, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Stivers? Does anyone have any questions of Mrs. Smith? Okay. The floor is open for a motion.
I, I move to deny the petitioner stated exception in paragraph 31. And before I go further, Mr. Bickner, do I give my reason as I'm speaking, or do I wait till discussion?
On a denial. My understanding is on a denial. You don't have to give your reasons because you're not moving to reject the administrative law judge's finding. If you moved to accept them, then you would have to give those things in the record for which you're, on which you're basing it. Because it is a finding of fact, not a conclusion of law.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kierakas, a second by Ms. Gilhousen. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. So the motion passes 5-0.
So I'm going to show that in our record as a denial of exception number one, Mr. Stivers.
Next exception. Mr. Stivers?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess he still goes first.
The next exception, we are, that was the only, I believe that was in the findings of fact. This exception deals with the conclusion of law. And the conclusion of law is paragraph 77. And again, we accept the, if you're, I don't know if you happen to be reading our exceptions, the underlying portion of that paragraph, which says, "Nothing in the language of subsection 3C indicates that classroom teacher should be read as former classroom teacher or otherwise in the past tense. The plain language of subsection 3C requires that an applicant for a $1,200 scholarship be a classroom teacher and have received an evaluation of highly effective in the most recent preceding school year." The basis of the exception were the, was set forth in our recommended order, which I believe is also part of your packet. And just as there's nothing in the statute that says that this should be viewed in the past tense, there's nothing that says it should be viewed in the current tense either for this particular scholarship. Again, for the big scholarship, it says, "You must remain employed as a classroom teacher, or now, as the statute says, you must be, you must remain employed at the district." The fact that that language is in here, there's no past tense, the term, again, it is our position that that is interjecting an additional term that is not put in there by the legislature. And the specifics of the statute, again... And the specifics of the statute, again, notwithstanding that a classroom teacher was evaluated as highly effective in the school year immediately preceding the year in which the scholarship would be awarded. So there's nothing that says that it's past tense, or that it, I mean, it is past tense because it's, this scholarship is kind of odd. Again, it is not a model of clarity, but it is going to the point where the classroom teacher, in the year, was rated highly effective and therefore has earned the scholarship. I think that, you know, they applied for it, and the fact that the superintendent and the prior superintendent read the statute the same way that was argued at the hearing, I, okay. We wouldn't be here if we didn't have conflicting views on how the statute was read. The legislature clearly intended for this scholarship to be awarded for teachers that were rated highly effective in the preceding school year in which the scholarship was being awarded. I think it's clear, the statute is not ambiguous, it's just clear on its face, and that's the way the statute reads. The express language of that statute allowed, would qualify these individuals as a classroom, not needing to be a classroom teacher at the time of the award of the scholarship.
Okay. Ms. Smith.
Okay, here we go. Try not to make this too painful, but if you can take a look at the statute, I believe it's in your materials, this is 1012.731. So the language that, and I'll wait if everybody, does everybody have it before you?
I've got.
Okay.
Does anyone need one? Okay.
All right. So the language that Mr. Stivers is referring you to is under paragraph three and C. And that's the language where it begins with the word notwithstanding the requirements of this subsection. Does everybody see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the petitioner's position is that word notwithstanding basically cancels out all the preceding language and the requirements of the statute in paragraph two. Now, I don't think we have a disagreement over what the word notwithstanding means, but what we do disagree with is if you continue reading that prefatory clause, what it says is notwithstanding the requirements of this subsection. So the administrative law judge agreed that what a subsection means when you're reading a statute is it's just referring to subsection three. So even if we agree with the petitioners that the word notwithstanding cancels out some of the other eligibility requirements in paragraph three, the important point that I'm trying to make is that the word notwithstanding does then not, does not cancel out every other paragraph in this statute. And the reason that that is important is that if you plainly read the other paragraphs of the statute, we can start with paragraph two, the second sentence. "The scholarship program shall provide categorical funding for scholarships to be awarded to classroom teachers." So again, that is why we read that one must be a classroom teacher at the time of the award. And then if you continue on to, down to paragraph four, if you jump down there, that is the requirement of what must be done each year. And specifically, it says in paragraph four, "Annually by December 1st, each school district shall submit to the department," and then sub A, "the number of eligible classroom teachers who qualify for the scholarship." So the statute does speak in present tense. It does not speak, nor does it use the word former classroom teacher. We all understand that the award must be based upon being, having received a highly effective evaluation in the preceding year. That's what the statute says. Nobody disagrees about that. But paragraph 4A, and then continuing on to 4B, it's the same argument there. What the school district must submit is the name and master school identification number of each school district in the district to which an eligible classroom teacher is assigned. So in this case, if you clearly read that, it means that the petitioners had to be assigned as a classroom teacher in 2017-18 in order to be eligible for the award. And then paragraph five also does speak in present tense. That speaks to what the department needs to do. Annually, by February 1st, the department shall disburse scholarship funds to each school district for each, again, present tense, eligible classroom teacher. So eligible classroom teacher, that's present tense at the time of the award. And additionally, when you look at the actual, the original provision that we were working with, 3C, the notwithstanding the requirements of this subsection, if you read that whole sentence, it gives you the years, and then it says, "Any classroom teacher who." So even looking at that 3C sentence, it still speaks to a classroom teacher who. So every single portion of the statute refers us to a classroom teacher is one of the requirements for eligibility. And that is, in large part, why I think the judge agreed with us. Thank you.
Bringing it back to the board, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Stivers? Do you have questions of Ms. Smith? The floor is open for a motion.
I move to accept the petitioner stated exception in paragraph 77. And my reasoning is because subsection 3C is silent as to whether the teacher had to remain a classroom teacher during the 2017-18 school year. And again, as they both pointed out, I agree with the, the notwithstanding is a dismissive, is a dismissive word.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second? A motion by Ms. Kerikas, a second by Mrs. B, um...
Bullock. Bullock.
Bullock. I do know you.
That's all right.
Any discussion? You look like you want to say something, Ms. Bola. Or am I reading your mind?
Big gasp. I'm hearing both sides of this argument.
Yeah.
And it's, this is an incredibly difficult one for me, having been a classroom teacher and understanding what these people, what these particular five people do for a living. But I also understand that this is a gar, I think your words were garbled legislative, mandate, whatever. And for that, I, I just have to say that this is a difficult decision, this particular one, because most of what we read was based on what was done the previous year, based on our evaluation the previous year. And this came af, this came during a very difficult, for want of a better word, understanding of where the legislature was coming from to help teachers, and in essence, they were not including all teachers. And that, that is the frustration for me. The legalese, however, understanding that the reference to current teachers in the other sections, though, does bring forth the fact that that's how we interpreted it at the time. I, one of the questions that I wrote down, and you said, "We really don't know how many." Ms. Troutman, do we have any clue as to how many other teachers besides these five?
Ms. Bola, wait just a minute. I think, can we?
We can't ask questions of that nature. I apologize.
There's a time for us to ask questions at the end.
You're limited to this record. That's what you're limited to.
So, okay.
May I be heard, only because several of the petitioner's exceptions have to do with the same issue? This is the heart of the matter, and...
This is the heart, yeah.
It doesn't seem like that's appropriate.
Here's my, here's my issue with what you're, what I think you're about to say is, what the future impact is of their decision is irrelevant to whether or not the law is correctly applied to the facts of this case, in my opinion. If you're asking them to rule, if you're going to be asking them to rule one way because of what might happen six months from now, rather than what is involved with these five people, I think that that's inappropriate. Would you disagree with that?
I, I was not actually speaking to that issue at all.
Okay.
What I was speaking to, Ms. Bola...
Microphone.
Was the fact that every single exception that petitioner's going to argue to you has to do with this issue. So I think that we should be allowed to offer some additional argument to the board on this issue because Ms. Bola and others might want to hear some additional information here.
Well, it's up to the chair what she does, but it will sit out five minutes, and there's five minutes on every one of them.
Yeah.
So, and I understand that they're all related, two, three, and four are related, and five is integrated with those.
I would ask Ms. Stoddard that the board defer on this one so that we can hear argument...
Tell me what kind of time you're asking for.
I would take an additional five minutes, just because otherwise you're not going to hear from me. If you make a decision on this one, then you've made the decision on all the other exceptions that come up on the same issue.
May I say something?
It's the pleasure of the board, so...
What is the pleasure of the...
Can I ask a question of, of Ms. Smith?
Well...
Ms. Smith, we, I feel like we already heard you. You explained your view on the notwithstanding, and Mr. Shriver explained his view on the notwithstanding. So I feel like you're probably just going to repeat what you've already said.
No, thankfully I do have some additional arguments, but my time...
Yeah, we need to stop this back and forth. I don't think this is proper, but I will, and listen to the wishes of the board members. If you would like to give each of them another five minutes on this, or do you want to just, do you feel like you've heard enough? I know, for one, I have studied this thing for days, and, and I'm sure y'all have too, but this one is tough. So it's the pleasure of the board, do you want to just continue on, or do you want to listen to?
If we give five minutes to one, we must give it to the other.
Well, that's what I said.
And I would be fine with that. That's fair.
Do y'all want to do that?
That way you're getting everything and you'd like to say.
All right, Ms. Gilhousen, you have it.
I'm fine with that.
You're fine, five minutes on, for each of them?
I'll be fine, as long as both people get that.
As long as both get five minutes.
Okay, so what do we do about the motion on the floor?
Okay. Then, Ms. Smith, I'm going to allow you to come first this time.
That's fine.
I want, yeah. I think that's fair, because I want to say this, well, I won't say anything until she, they all finish up.
And this is part of the continued discussion.
Right.
Thank you. Because this is really the heart of the issue while you're here, so I just didn't want to not be able to tell you everything that I wanted to say to you. So what we just went through was what's called statutory analysis. And the reason that the counsel for this board sent this issue to the administrative law judge was in order to make this determination as to what the statute said. So with, with all due respect to all of you here, everyone can have a different interpretation of what the statute said. But the reason why Mr. Degada referred this to the administrative law judge is precisely for this reason, because there has to be a proper analysis made of the statute. And that's what the administrative law judge was there to do. So, starting with that. Secondly, we have to keep in mind that there are going to be issues like with Ms. Foster. Ms. Foster retired. So if you adopt what the petitioners are setting forth, you can have teachers leave, not just retire, but just quit teaching and go into another profession, go into the private school, and you're still going to have to pay them that $1,200 because it would be based upon the preceding school year. Does that make sense? I see people looking confused.
That makes sense.
What's that? Okay, let me explain that because that's, that's an important distinction. So with the 2018 statute, all that it amended was for the $6,000 scholarship. It's, it's underneath the $6,000 award. The legislature added B2. So that language that you're referring to, Ms. Bola, a school district employee who is no longer a classroom teacher may receive an award if the employee was a classroom teacher in the prior school year, that does not apply to the $1,200 or the $800. And one of the other hallmarks of statutory construction, and it may not be right, but we, we have to believe that the people that write the laws mean what they say. And that had they wanted that language to apply to 3C, they would have had a catch-all at the end that said, "You may still be an employee of the school board if you were qualified in the preceding year." But they did not say that. So the way that this statute is written is if somebody was eligible based upon being rated highly effective in 1617, and then they left the district, they would still, if you adopt the petitioner's theory of the statute, you would still have to pay them. And I think that that is where sometimes, when we read these statutes, another hallmark of statutory construction is we can't have it lead to absurd results. And frankly, I think that that would be an absurd result because we're trying to compensate and award the teachers that are here. So that's really important to recognize. And lastly, again, I just wanted to mention that the whole idea of deference, we didn't argue anything about deference. All we argued was that our staff people have to have discretion in order to make the awards that they worked so hard to do. Like I said, there were $2,000, $2,000 applications that came in. So they are decisions that are going to have to continue to be made, and this board should just recognize the consequences to adopting the petitioners, what they're advancing here. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stivers?
Thank you. I, I think first and foremost, in, in reply, the ramifications of what you do aren't in this record, so that they're completely irrelevant. What happens tomorrow because of what you do today is irrelevant to what happens. The fact that we're here and the reasons of why the matter was referred to DOA, the Division of Administrative Hearings for an Administrative Law Judge, quite frankly, are irrelevant. If this board, not this board, but if the Clay County School Board had chosen, they didn't have to send it to DOA. They could have held the hearing in front of either one of the designated people, like, which I understand is the way you guys are going to be handling matters in the future, or you hear it to the entire board. So it doesn't have to go to the division. That's something that the, your predecessors, and I don't know if any of you were on the board at that time, but that's the decision that that board made, and the superintendent made, not Mr. Brodsky, but the, I think, the prior superintendent. Again, it's irrelevant as to why we're here. We're here because the statute on its face is clear. It, it doesn't say, in, in paragraph 3C, the, the first part of the paragraph where it has the notwithstanding language, if you read, after it says the, the years for which the scholarship applies, it says, "Any classroom teacher." It doesn't say, "Any current classroom teacher." Any classroom teacher that received the evaluation of highly effective gets the, in the preceding year, gets the $1,200. If it's an effective, which really wasn't an issue in our case, there's a scholarship of $800. In order to get that scholarship, someone has to apply for it. If they don't apply for it, they don't get it. It's, it's not something that the board has to go out and seek people to do. They have to apply for it, they have to take the affirmative step in order to have this scholarship awarded to them. The statute is clear. I mean, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think it's clear. And I think that the remaining portions of the exceptions, as I think were pointed out, this is the central issue of what, what we argued to the administrative law judge and what... and what we're now here arguing to this board about is the board has, the board can read the statute and make a determination as to how this board is going to interpret the statute. And that's what we're here asking the board to do, is to make the interpretation that these teachers are entitled to this award. Thank you.
Okay, and bringing it back to the board to finish our discussion on this, Ms. Bola, you look like you wanted to finish up what you were.
Here again, it's clarification. In B, "In order to demonstrate eligibility for an award, once a classroom teacher is deemed eligible by the school district, the teacher shall remain eligible as long as he or she remains employed by the school district as a classroom teacher at the time of the reward, of the award and receives an annual performance evaluation, et cetera." And I'm, we're zeroing in on the notwithstanding, but in the prior paragraph it tells us, but isn't that talking about the $6,000 award? It is.
It is talking about the $6,000 award.
So this comes under the, where they're talking about the $6,000.
I'm on the wrong C then.
Yeah.
And that's where.
I'm at the wrong C, I apologize.
Okay.
I'll have a 3C.
It seems pretty clear to me.
Okay.
I'm reading this notwithstanding as.
Ms. Bullock. Again, we're talking about these five teachers. We can't predict the future or all that. And it says, to me, it's clear about immediately preceding the year in which the scholarship will be awarded.
Okay. Ms. Gillhausen, any comments?
Well, I think a good point was made that part of the reason this went before the administrative law judge was because these, these statutes are not clear and they are difficult to interpret. So in my opinion, in order for us to reject something that the administrative law judge has decided, we'd have to have pretty solid evidence as to why we're going to do that. And I don't think just an opinion of the word notwithstanding is substantive enough to argue that point.
Okay, then my feeling about it is we have run into things like this before dealing with state law. So many times in this paragraph, it says one thing and in the next paragraph it says another. It invites different interpretations of the law. I guess that's why we have lots of lawyers. This is typical and I would hope that there would be more clarification to, to clear this up. It's almost like, well, you know, I was thinking about this in this paragraph and then over here, but they're not marrying this so that it flows well. The word notwithstanding threw me at first. I, I was, the first day or two that I read through all of this, and I even read the 231 pages of testimony, every word, till my eyes almost fell out. But when I first read it, I felt like it was this way. And then I waited a day or two and I went back and I reread it. And then to be honest, I Googled it, Ms. Stuttered. I Googled notwithstanding and it talked about, you know, in day-to-day language and in legal language and what it means. And basically what I started doing then was going back and reading it and inserting the word despite or in spite of when I saw notwithstanding. And so then that paragraph says, "In spite of the requirements or despite the requirements of this subsection, which is all that up above about the $6,000 for the blah, blah, blah years, any classroom teacher who was, who was evaluated as highly effective in the school year immediately preceding the year in which the scholarship will be rewarded shall receive a scholarship of $1,200, even including a class two teacher who received an award pursuant to A." So then that put a whole different light on how I interpreted that, that sentence, the word notwithstanding. And I thought, they're just trying to, to play with our heads here because the language is not real clear. And, and it's a shame that it's not because we wouldn't be sitting here if it was clear. So.
That's why I think it's important.
But I think the using in spite of or despite, it made it so clear because sometimes you think, well, they didn't say that, but they must have meant that, they just didn't say it. But I don't believe I can interpret, I'm not a lawyer, I don't think I can interpret the law by what they didn't say. I have to take it that they knew what they were doing and they just didn't say it. And so.
And because we're not attorneys, we don't have those credentials, that's why I feel like it's important we rely on the judge's opinion.
Yeah, well.
Or the judge, it's not his opinion, it's his decision.
That's one, one person's opinion.
It is.
And just like you said, it was an opinion, so.
It was an opinion, it's not a.
And just like we have different opinions all in this area, so we.
Anyway, any further discussion? Okay, we have the motion by Ms. Carrickus, second by Ms. Bullock.
Bullock, whoever.
I keep wanting to call you Bola for some reason.
Well, it's two Bs.
She's next to you. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries 4-1 with Ms. Gillhausen dissenting.
Okay. The record then, the record will show that exception number two has been sustained or accepted.
Okay, we'll go to the next exception, number three. Mr. Schreiber goes first. No, yeah, Mr. Schreiber, you go first.
Yes, I'll give you a second, I lost my place. Exception number three goes to paragraph 78 of the administrative law judge's conclusions. And again, this is his, characterizing the statute or the scholarship as a step-down scholarship for current classroom teachers and that it is not intended as a, as a reward to former classroom teachers for a job well done. Again, I, I think that as we argued on the last exception, the statute is clear that this is in fact a scholarship that's awarded to teachers. It's, even the big scholarship is based on what happened on the previous year. So it, it is a scholarship that's based on a job well done, not on a job you're doing well today. The, there are the two different scholarships, the, the, the requirements for each of the scholarships are distinctively different. These teachers were all rated as highly effective during the period prior to the year that this scholarship should have been awarded and that these, that the exception should be granted in that the, whether or not these teachers are classroom teachers in the year of the award is irrelevant based on the language of the statute, that it is any classroom teacher that was rated highly effective or effective, although that was not an issue in our case, under section 3C of that statute.
Ms. Smith.
So the response to that is, is, is simple. The definition of, of what step-down means, I don't think the administrative law judge meant anything derogatory. It was literally just that this is a smaller amount than, sometimes we refer to it as the big statute, the $6,000 statute. So I would ask that you deny this.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schreiber or Ms. Smith?
Uh-uh.
Okay, then the floor is open for a motion.
I'll move to accept the petitioner stated exception in paragraph 78. My reason being because, again, subsection 3C carries no requirement that the teacher remain in the classroom.
Would you repeat that, you, and speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. I move to accept petitioner stated exception in paragraph 78. And my reason is because subsection 3C carries no requirement that the teacher remain in the classroom.
And is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion by Ms. Carrickus, a second by Ms. Bullock. Any discussion?
I don't see this as a scene.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries 3-2 with Ms. Bola and Ms. Gillhausen dissenting.
The record will reflect then that exception number three has been sustained or accepted.
Okay, now except the fourth exception, Mr. Schreiber.
Thank you. The fourth exception goes to paragraph 81 of the administrative law judge's recommended order, where he concluded that, he concluded that the school board's argument was more defensible than the petitioner's in that the not, the notwithstanding clause is not meant to eliminate the requirement that a scholarship awardee must be a classroom teacher at the time of the award. We accepted that because it is our position, as we have discussed here previously, that the statute is clear, that there is nothing in the statute that requires a current classroom teacher for this particular aspect of this award and that based on the reasons set forth in the recommenda, in the exceptions that we have filed and what this board has done in the past, we'd ask that our exception be accepted.
Ms. Smith.
All right, I'm, I'm going to try to climb out of my hole and see if I can just speak to Ms. Stuttered because I think I had the same reading when I read notwithstanding.
Yeah, notwithstanding is not a word I like.
I don't either. And they, they put it in statutes all the time.
That's like here and after and all these.
Right.
Legal things.
Right, right. So reading the word despite, or in spite of, the requirements of this subsection, again, I, I can tell you all that a subsection just means that particular subsection three. So if you continue reading this statute, it is undeniable in four and in five that the language does speak in present tense to a classroom teacher. That is why the court found that actually the statute is not ambiguous. It may be ill-begotten and it may be confusing in myriad other ways, but I must draw the, the board's attention to that, that this statute does not say former classroom teacher. It speaks in the present tense. So if, even if we do, Ms. Stuttered, what, you know, your impulse was to strike out everything that came above it, you still have to contend with the entirety of the statute. You can't just erase paragraphs four and paragraph five. And Ms. Troutman testified during the hearing, and since you read every painful page you saw, what we have to report as the school board is the number of classroom teachers. And Ms. Troutman also explained that when the legislature made this amendment, the one that Ms. Bola was referring to, that if you are still an, an employee of the school district, so what we have to do, which was testified to, is when we reported our numbers to the state, we reported how many classroom teachers qualified for the $6,000 and the $1,200 classroom teacher. And then there was a separate category where we had to report how many present employees who are no longer classroom teachers qualified for that $6,000. There was no other column though for an analogous, you know, reporting for the $1,200. So what that means is, yes, you have the breakdown for the $6,000, you can be the classroom teacher or you can be the former classroom teacher who is now an employee. But for the $1,200, there is no similar reporting. You only reported how many classroom teachers qualified for the $1,200. And I bring you back to paragraph four and to paragraph five of the statute. And I understand why y'all want to do what you want to do, but you can't just ignore what the language is, which is present tense. It is reporting the, in the present tense, classroom teachers. How the legislature actually wanted to award former classroom teachers, it, it could have said that. The reason that we look to the previous evaluation in the previous year is that when we are giving these awards, we don't have yet the evaluation for the current year, right? It is not yet finalized. So you have to look to the previous evaluation and you have to report it, just as I described. So, you look like you had a question.
No, my, my phone went beep, beep, and I have it turned off. It made me jump.
Okay, okay. So again, it, it, you can't only hone in on the notwithstanding and stop there. You have to read the rest of the statute. The notwithstanding only applies to the subsection three. And so I would ask you to take another look at four and at five and consider what I've told you about the way that each school district in the state is required to report with that breakdown of the $6,000 going to current classroom teachers and then former classroom teachers who are present employees. And then as to the $1,200, it only goes, the reporting, to classroom teachers. Those are the state's forms, that was what came into evidence during the hearing, that's what Ms. Troutman testified to. That's how every school district in the state has to report. Thank you.
It's, it seems like to me there's some fuzzy area and when, when you call, who is a classroom teacher? You know, we've got so many different titles and designations that you stop thinking, well, what are these people? They're not janitors, they're not lunchroom workers, they're not administrative secretaries, so.
They're working with students and teaching students on a day-to-day basis.
So where, and help me, Ms. Bola, because you are a former teacher. Where do you draw the line and say, oh, on this side of the line, or we're going to call those classroom teachers? Do we pay those people like they're teachers? Don't we?
And we also pay those on this side of the line.
All right, but this side of the line.
As teachers. If you were to classify everyone as a teacher that teaches, the legislature would have probably made this a heck of a lot clearer than the muddled mess it is.
Well, and, and you're right, Ms. Bola, and I second, it's a muddled mess, but it puts districts in an awkward situation in trying to interpret this because, you know, I honestly, I could argue both sides of this one. This is tough because the notwithstanding and then it says, "Any classroom teacher." And I'm thinking, you know, you, you're, you're torn on this because it's not real clear.
You see now, I found it to be clear because somewhere in here, and I wrote it on my notes, it says, "A classroom teacher is somebody who instructs, supervises, and evaluates students."
Yeah, I read that in some of these papers, yeah.
So, you know, it's not broken down to, do they, are they allowed in terms or not? And I know that was something that was used, but I believe the statute somewhere, it said, instruct, supervise, and evaluate students. So in my eyes, they are all teachers. And, and I guess the point is you both have very valid opinions. You're interpreting the statute one way and you're interpreting it another way. And that doesn't mean that anyone is, in my eyes, is right or wrong. We're here to decide and, and even up here, we each have a different opinion on how we are reading that statute. So that's just my take on it. I, I jotted this in my notes, and teachers, they're all, in my eyes, they're all classroom teachers because they instruct, supervise, and evaluate the students. And that was part of it. And maybe that's extremely basic and you're not happy with that, but, sorry.
Also, I don't feel that our, our teachers should be penalized because there's all this muddled kind of thing. I mean, if they had a different title, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. But I, I just, and I mean, Stottman, I know. But, I, I just, and I, I mean, Troutman, I know this was a very difficult thing for you to do, to go through and, and try to decipher all this. I mean, it's, it's no wonder, I mean, you know, I could see a thousand different ways this could've gone, so I appreciate all the time that you, you put into that, because I, it's, it's obvious that it's, it's not clear, it's not clear-cut for any of us, so...
The other side of this, though, is that under section 731, it does say, best and brightest teacher scholarship program. And it is titled, the best and brightest teacher scholarship program. And as you go through, the best and brightest teacher scholarship program, it outlines what the requirements are, and it's that one word, notwithstanding, that had they not had that, this would have then all been interpreted and opined, whatever you want to use, whatever term you would like to use to evaluate this, under the same qualifications. And it would have been much clearer.
I agree. Mrs. Bola?
And it's, I mean, the $6,000 is for the SAT, ACT, bottom line. That was for the SAT, ACT. And the $1,200, $800 was for those of us who didn't have our SAT or ACT scores, and therefore were given a reward based on our highly effective or effective standing.
You're struggling, aren't you?
Yeah.
I think before we had all this discussion, we were supposed to have a motion and a second.
We did.
We did not.
We did not.
We did not.
We didn't.
Excuse me?
There've been so many.
We did not, no.
I guess I don't want to be this ingenuous. Okay, I'll entertain a motion and, and on this exception.
Well, I'll move to accept the petitioner stated exception in paragraph eighty-one. And my reason, again, is subsection three C does not require that a teacher remain in the classroom the following year. I might also add that that statement that I just read, that I considered them all teachers, because a teacher is someone who instructs, supervises, and evaluates the students.
Second. Who seconded?
I did.
I have a motion by Ms. Kerikas.
Seems to be a theme here.
Second by Ms. Bullock.
Yes.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries four, one. Okay, now, we're to exception five, Mr. Stivers.
The last of sec, the last exception, this accept and accept is starting to get confusing, but the, the last exception goes to the recommendation of the administrative law judge as it pertains to Ms. Andrews, Ms. Deaton, and Ms. Foster, and the administrative law judge's recommendation that those three individuals were not entitled to the scholarship for the applicable year to which they applied for it. We believe that these, as interpreted by this board, the issue as to whether or not they were, quote, "classroom teachers" at the time of the award, that these individuals were entitled to the award. In addition, it is our position that these individuals, even though they were qualified, they were, they are ESE facilitators, is their stated position, that they meet the definition of a classroom teacher, as Ms. Kerikas has noticed. They, they teach the kids, they're not, you know, a, a lot of what we discussed at, in, in reading the transcript, a lot of what was discussed was, well, were you in focus? Were you in focus for this? Were you in focus for this? Were you in focus for that? Well, focus doesn't tell you what these people are doing. What these people are doing are teaching the kids. They may be one-on-one, they may be in small groups, they are teachers. And to me, that is an underlying issue, and there's, there's no definition in the, in the statute that tells you, it defines what a classroom teacher is, and I believe that's the, where you pulled that from, but, but it doesn't say, are you a classroom, are you in a traditional classroom, or are you in a non-traditional classroom? Are you a one-on-one classroom teacher? Are you a one-on-four classroom teacher? What do you have to do to be a classroom teacher? Do you have to do lesson plans? Do you have to be in focus? The statute doesn't, doesn't mention anything like that. The statute itself, as noted in the exceptions that we filed, there was a, a interesting case of an, another administrative law judge, if I can put my hands on it real... Wrong. There is nothing in the statute that gives you a quantitative or a qualitative definition as to what a teacher must do in order to meet that definition of a classroom teacher. It doesn't say that you have to teach twenty-five kids in five classes every day. It doesn't say you have to teach fifteen kids. It doesn't say you have to teach ten kids. It doesn't say five kids. It doesn't even say one kid. It doesn't say, do you have to be in a traditional classroom? It doesn't say that you walk into the tradition, traditional classroom, and the one that unfortunately that pops in my head is from the movie, Mr. Hand, from Fast Times at Ridgemont High. Mr. Hand, that's a traditional classroom. Is that what you have to be? There is nothing in the statute that gives any type of quantitative or qualitative definition. It just, it's, it's a very broad stroke. Our position is that these people, although they push into a classroom, they deal with IEPs, which are those, I'm sure this board is aware, those are the lesson plans for those individual kids. Those are the equivalent. Those were the arguments that you heard, those, that's the testimony that was heard at the hearing, that the IEPs are the lesson plans. These people go into, into classroom situations, into traditional classroom situations, teach the kids, they were entitled to the scholarship.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Okay, so, I started out talking to you today about the fact that nobody really likes this program, and we shouldn't be assigning our own values and opinions to what we're doing here today. I think I failed in that regard to some extent, because that's what I hear going on here today. And, and I'm not trying to be dismissive, dismissive of you all. My father was a teacher in Broward County, so I, I hold educators up in the highest regard. But there are statutory definitions of what a classroom teacher is. It's found in one oh one, two point oh one, and the definition that I think you were speaking to before is, it's, it is an individual who is assigned the professional activity of instructing students in courses in classroom situations. So, again, as Ms. Gilhousen said, we, we did, as lawyers and as the administrative law judge, try to parse through what that means, because you often do have to do that. And what the court found very relevant, and what you should consider today for our ESE support facilitators, is that they do push into classes, what we started out talking about, they are not certified in field for that math class. They are not standing in the front of the classroom, teaching the math class. They are providing support to that individual student, to give him the resources so that he can learn that math material. And I am not in any way trying to, you know, assign any less value to what that ESE support facilitator does on a daily basis to, you know, their contact students. But what the court took a lot of time doing, and what you need to consider, is that it went through the particular definition and looked at the job descriptions for the, the county, and the ESE support facilitator job description talks about providing the instruction on an as-needed basis. And we contrasted that to the job description for the classroom teacher, which talks about just instructing period, instruction period. So, that is where you need to consider, that these folks, they provide the utmost service to our students, the utmost education, but they are not meeting the definition of classroom teacher. And I don't want to have to go through the whole order that the judge laid out, but I thought he did a good job of going through Ms. Andrews and Ms. Deaton and Ms. Foster, and discussing why the particular things that they do on a daily basis just does not satisfy the requirements of what it means to be a classroom teacher. And again, this isn't your decision as to what you would like a classroom teacher to be. This is what the state has decided, and we are beholden to. So, I would ask that you would deny this exception. Thank you.
If you'll come to the mic, and then I'll let her have one point of clarification. I'm trying to be equal.
Yeah, no, that's fine. One point, just to make, so we're, we're clear on what we're talking about. We were talking about, this is the scholarship, so for the previous year, we're dealing with the evaluation record, was the sixteen-seventeen school year. These four individual, or three individuals that we're talking about, three, yeah, three, the three individuals that we're talking about, it was stip, we, the parties agreed that these people met the definition of classroom teacher during that sixteen-seventeen school year. So, I just wanted to make sure that that point was clear. The point of contention was what was happening during the current school year, which would have been the year that the scholarship was awarded. That's what we were disputing, just so we want to make that clear.
Okay. I'll give you a minute or two? Okay. I'm trying to be
I appreciate it.
about fair and balanced here. Okay, bringing it back to the board, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Stivers or Ms. Smith?
And I don't know who to answer this. I just have a question on petitioner, Ms. Brown. Talks that she, she reserve war to be $1,200. She was a full-time sprint and taught at UNF in the seventeen-eighteen year. She wasn't even in the classroom here in Clay County? She was in UNF during that time? That's my question.
It said she did both.
It was my understanding that she modeled teaching in front of an intern, and I assumed it was in our classroom.
It said half the day at UNF and half the day at Grove Park Elementary.
Because she was part of a day.
She split.
I was just making a point of clarity.
But we're not on that one.
Where you're dealing with Easter Brown, and we haven't got to Ms. Brown yet.
Okay.
Okay, back up then.
We're dealing with Ms. Andrews, Ms. Deaton.
We're dealing with the other one, okay.
That's a respondent's exception, yeah.
We'll get, save your question for later.
Right.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to accept the petitioner stated except, uh, exception to recommendation number one. And my reason, and I hate to keep using the same one, and I apologize, Ms. Smith, subsection three C does not require they continue teaching in the classroom the following year, which would be the twenty-seventeen-eighteen year. And all three were classroom teachers in the twenty-sixteen-seventeen school year, the year that they earned the scholarship.
I second it.
Have a motion by Ms. Kerikas, a second by Ms. Bullock. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries four, one. Now...
Now, we do the respondent's.
Okay. Now, we will go to the, uh, two exceptions of the respondent. We'll go to exception one, and, Ms. Smith, you go first.
Thank you, Ms. Stuttered. Okay, so, you're, we're there now. Um, Bullock, we're talking about Easter Brown now, and you're correct, Ms. Brown was the sprint specialist in two thousand seventeen-eighteen, at the time that the scholarship was awarded. So, you are correct that she was fifty percent UNF and, and fifty percent the board. She was modeling teaching to the teachers, but she was not directly responsible for the instruction of the K through twelve students, if that makes sense. And if we go to the definition of classroom teacher, classroom teacher includes the subset of K through twelve. And I think the board is probably familiar with that, with the audit that just happened with the pre-K kids. You know, the board tried to argue, and, and Ms. Troutman tried to, you know, make those students eligible, which, by the way, that's what she is devoted to doing, is trying to make these teachers eligible. But in this case, Ms. Brown in seventeen-eighteen was, was not a classroom teacher that satisfied the definition. And this is an example, though, because I know what Mr. Stivers is gonna say is, but wait, we need to look at what she was doing in sixteen-seventeen. So, because you all have decided that you should award her the $1,200 based upon what she was doing in the previous year, but not what she was actually doing in the year she got the award, she's an example of, of where this can get a little wily, because we, we thought absolutely that Ms. Brown was clearly not a, a classroom teacher. You know, she was teaching the UNF interns, and she was teaching our new teachers, but she in no way was teaching the students. She did not have any assigned courses, she did not input grades, she did not prepare evaluations, which, by the way, is why Ms. Troutman relies on all that stuff, because as much as we might have opinions as to who was a teacher, we have to have some sort of markers within the districts that we can look at to see whether an individual is satisfying the definition of a classroom teacher. So, that's why Ms. Troutman went into focus and tried to see if there was any particular students that were connected to the particular petitioner. And that would be the person that input the grades, does the evaluation, does all that kind of stuff. So, here, the interesting thing that I want to point you to, because we're on the recommendations, if you look at the judge's recommended order, and that's on page thirty-eight of the order there, paragraph two, so what he says there is, if you've, you're finding that petitioners Easter Brown and Danielle Perachelli were eligible for a $1,200 scholarship under the two thousand seventeen Florida Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship Program, because they were classroom teachers during the seventeen-eighteen school year, what he then concluded is, he is asking you, the board, to direct staff to take all practicable measures to secure the scholarship monies for Ms. Brown and Ms. Perachelli. So, again, the exception that we're asking for is, is that you reject the recommendation that Ms. Brown should get the, the monies. But I wanted to bring to your attention what the judge was asking you to do. He's not asking you to pay these petitioners. He's asking you to direct Ms. Troutman, or Mr. Broski, or whoever you direct, to take all practicable measures to secure the scholarship monies for these people. So, whatever the board decides today, you make the request to the state, and the state may still very well reject your request. And I just wanted to point that out, not because it's, it's pertinent to you denying Ms. Brown the scholarship, but just so that you understand what the limitations are on what you can do today, because this is not the board's money. This is the state's money, and the state may very well reject your request. But that doesn't mean you can't make it. But going back to Ms. Brown, we need to deny her the scholarship for the reasons that I just discussed. I hope I didn't confuse anything more, but I can come back and answer questions.
Is everybody clear on all this? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Stivers. I'm glad I'm not an attorney.
Well, notwithstanding the fact that we have to go along.
Despite.
Yeah, yeah, in spite of, yeah.
In spite of. Jeez.
The exception that was filed, oddly enough, it, it doesn't ask the board to accept or reject any specific finding of fact. It doesn't identify any conclusion of law that it's asking you to accept or reject. It's merely asking you to change the recommendation. So, the issue, you know, honestly, I'm a little perplexed, because there is no finding of fact to overturn, because if you overturn the recommendation, now you're overturning some finding of fact or some conclusion of law. Yet, it's not identified in the exception as to what you're, you're being asked to overturn. If the exception does not specifically identify the conclusion of law or the finding of fact that you're asked to overturn, it should be rejected for that reason and that reason alone. It's merely the recommendation that they're, that, 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 that they're asking you to overturn. Well, what's the basis of doing it? The judge... The judge made a recommendation to award Ms. Brown the scholarship based on the fact that he found that she was a classroom teacher for the 1718 school year. Now what finding of fact have you been asked to overturn? That would be, I guess, the finding of fact, but it's not within the request that's in front of you. Ms. Brown, and, and what's interesting as well with Ms. Brown is this statute for the best and brightest, not only, it's, it's kind of a broad break, broad-based definition, where again, the, the statute that defines a classroom teacher, it describes the professional activity of instructing students in courses and classroom situations, but it does not quantify it, requiring exempted activity to be performed at a certain number of days a week, number of hours a day. It doesn't say that. And that is from a previous Division of Administrative Hearings case. This scholarship and what a classroom teacher does is also defined by statute as doing career education, adult education. It covers the ambit of what people do. And what Ms. Brown testified to do, yes, she, she was, for the 1617 school year, it was stipulated that she met the definition of a classroom teacher. For 1718, she was the sprint teacher, dealing with UNF students. And that was her primary role. What was the secondary role of something that she does? She testified that she helps new teachers, young teachers, with developing lesson plans, preparing lesson plans, implementing lesson plans, teaching actual Clay County K through 12 students. Maybe not every day, but she does go in and teach, the goal of which is, yes, admittedly, to help a young teacher with what they're doing. But by helping the young teacher, she's teaching the kids that are in the class. She's showing these young, these young teachers how to do it, how to get information, or how to impart that information and try to get them to learn the topic that they're covering in that day. She is performing the activity of teaching. She didn't, admittedly, she did not assign grades to Clay County students. But again, she, you know, we're, we're back to the argument about, what does focus say you do? Well, again, it's what these people do on a day-to-day basis. And Ms. Brown met the definition, because she was. She was teaching the K-12 students, not directly, admittedly, but sometimes directly. But she was also stipulated to that she met the definition of the classroom teacher during the 1617 academic year.
Okay. So they both spoke, right? This is getting muddy. Okay. Any, um, any questions or comments from the board to Mr. Stivers or Ms. Smith? Of any, no question? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll go. I move to deny the respondent's exception, excuse me, respondent's exception number one, as to the recommendation number two, Easter Brown. And my reasoning is because subsection 3C states, a teacher is not required to continue as a classroom teacher the following year at the time of the award. And it's undisputed that Easter Brown qualified as a classroom teacher in the 2016-17 school year.
And a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Kerikas, second by Ms. Bullock. Ms. Bullock, this might be the time for you to ask your question.
Sure, I was just, it was just concerning, it was just odd to me that she would have been approved, and, but yet the others were not. That's what was surprising to me. That's why I was questioning that. I mean, I just found that a little unusual.
It does seem like an inconsistency.
Where, I mean, I understand, um, where Danielle, where she had one and one, but, I mean, but that one was just odd to me, so, you know.
But again, I think it all goes back to notwithstanding.
Yeah.
I, I feel like we're not looking at the 2017-18 school year.
I don't like that. Oh, no. I understand. I mean, she was definitely, as far as I'm concerned, she did the 1617, but it's just odd that that one would have been approved if they were following that same pursuit of the, the next year, so, yeah.
Right. Yeah, they're, they're not following that.
Yeah.
May I ask a question as to when Ms. Brown started as the sprint specialist? Was it prior to the start of the school year?
Uh, I believe it was for the 1718 school year.
But it was before, it was, it was before that time.
In 1617, she taught four classes.
No, I know that.
She was a sprint specialist.
Right.
But 1718, she went full-time.
She was a fourth grade teacher at Grove Park Elementary.
She was a fourth grade teacher.
Fourth grade teacher at Grove Park Elementary.
You're not sprint and fourth grade teacher.
Yeah.
Did you get a question? She wasn't a sprint specialist.
She wasn't a sprint specialist.
No, she was a fourth grade teacher.
Oh, here, she gets something.
Full-time?
But did she start before the school?
Wait, we can't, we, we can't have, we had three people talking at one time. The court reporter is going bonkers over here. So if you want to each individually say what you wanted to say, so she can get it on record, that would be good. Would that help you? All right, so who goes first? There's three of you talking.
My understanding is a sprint specialist is a full-time position. So she only held it in 1718. She taught various classes in 1617.
Fourth grade teachers.
Okay. And Mr. Stivers, you've got that long to talk. I'm trying to stay equal.
No, I, I would agree with, what, whatever, whatever we have on our stipulation is what was going on. My recollection was, is that, I know she taught four classes, and I believe it was two and two for four hours, and then she did something else.
Are you talking about 1718?
1617.
In 1617, fourth grade.
Someone up here said she taught elementary.
Grove Park Elementary.
Yeah, Grove Park Elementary.
Fourth grade, full-time.
Okay. So, did you get all of, maybe? All right, Ms. Bullock, now it's your turn to say whatever you were saying.
No, I, I agree. I just.
Or was it Ms. Bola?
I just thought it was unusual, because it seemed like they didn't follow suit, is all I was asking about.
And the reason.
Go ahead, Ms. Bola.
The reason that I was asking when she became the sprint specialist was if it was after the beginning of the school year, 1718 school year. Thank you. That's where I thought maybe.
And what was the answer?
No, she did not. She started before that time. And if, if there had been some overlap, I could see where the judge would have made that stipulation.
It just seems like the judge didn't apply the same rules.
Correct.
Right. He just went by the 2016-17 school year.
This is why this is so.
Right.
Yeah.
Hard to wade through, because the consistence, I don't know.
And if I may make a statement.
Yes, Ms. Bola.
Ms. Troutman, having had to go through all of this, I admire you and I appreciate all that you've done, and this was not easy.
We should say.
And if we're having difficulty looking at it post-time, I can't imagine what you were going through during the time that you were trying to sort all of this out.
I felt sorry for the 231 pages.
Yeah, I agree.
Committee of conversations where.
I'm sure.
We saw counsel from both legal and the superintendent and from Mr. Broski before decisions were not made.
Right.
It's obvious that a lot of work was.
We need to vote. We haven't voted on this motion yet.
I've got a motion in a second. We're, we're in the middle of discussion right now.
Well, we're carrying on a social conversation.
But I think we're through now with the discussion, aren't we? So let's take a vote. The motion was to deny.
Yes, deny or.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries for one.
Who's a dissent?
The, Ms. Gilhouse has dissented. Okay, we'll go to exception two.
So the basis for Ms. Pericelli's exception, I, I think is kind of mooted out already, but just for the record, let me clarify. The administrative law judge's initial finding was that the teacher had to be a classroom teacher at the time of the award in order to be eligible. And the record was clear here that Ms. Pericelli had taught grade recovery only during the first semester. And Ms. Tucker, the assistant principal, testified that she was no longer teaching that during the second semester of 1718. So again, going on our understanding of the law, that you must be a classroom teacher of the time of the award, that was the, the basis for why she was not eligible. But I, I did want to speak to the fact that Ms. Troutman's job is basically going to be impossible now. She's going to need a lot of direction as to how to proceed, because there are thousands of applications that have to be determined every year. So now that you have, you know, made these recommendations, just please make sure you follow through with her, because she really has done such a fantastic job, and, and was nearly in tears on the stand when she said, you know, her primary focus is to qualify teachers, to make them eligible. And I saw how she waded through everything, trying to give the money to each and every one of these people. So this is, that was just my two cents on following up on, on your comments to Ms. Troutman. But again, this is Ms. Pericelli, and we would ask that you would reject, oh, actually, she's a little bit different, and here's why. I apologize. Let me finish what I was going to say about Ms. Pericelli. She was not a classroom teacher in 1617. So this is one, we're focusing on the notwithstanding language, we might actually get a different result.
You just insist on using that word.
I know. Well, you all kept using it too. So for Ms. Pericelli, in the 1617 school year, she was an ESC support facilitator, and she also did teach just the grade recovery to one student, one classroom. I'm sorry, one course, the grade recovery, so.
That's not what it says in your paperwork. It says two periods, two students in the 16 year.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Two students.
Two students, two periods.
But during that year, she was, she did not, well, let me say this. So when she made the application in 1718, she did not.
Grade recovery, one year.
She had not been assigned a course for that grade recovery for the 1617 school year, if that makes sense. There was no actual course assigned to her. She didn't have any students assigned to her. She was an ESC support facilitator.
Which is what the other three, okay.
Right. I mean, we're, we're.
I'm telling, yeah, I'm, yeah.
If, if you're going to find that her duties as an ESC. Yeah, I was going to say, if, if your findings as to her duties as an ESC support facilitator are going to qualify her, then yes, I, I agree. There's, there's no difference. So if you all have questions though, about the, the finding issue, what I said before, just, just realize that what you are going to be recommending, based upon what you've decided here today, is you're going to be requesting Ms. Troutman, Mr. Broski, whoever, to request the money from the state for these petitioners. The state may very well, you know, reject that request. But you're making determinations here today that do impact the program going forward. So that will have to be sorted out as to how your determinations today are now going to impact future teachers, and if other teachers are going to come and apply for this scholarship based upon your findings today, so.
And I'm hoping the legislature will clear up some language, so that Ms. Troutman's job won't be so hard.
Nah.
They won't.
Here's hoping.
But we can always ask.
Here's, here's hoping, but.
I mean, they need it more difficult than.
With the, I mean, with the Superintendent Association, the School Board Association, the attorneys, School Board Attorneys Association, surely somebody will listen to someone that it needs to be clarified. And that's for all of our goods, your good and ours. But, thank you. I think you're going to wind it up.
As we say, save the best for last.
Save the best for last, okay.
Ms. Pericelli is somewhat in a, in a somewhat unique situation in comparison to what the other petitioners were in. During the 1617 academic year, she taught two periods of grade recovery classes, and then as an ESC facilitator, she pushed into other classes, as I'm sure, you know, most the board is aware of what they do. She taught language arts, math, and science to the two students in grade recovery. She made the lesson, she, everything that you would think that the traditional classroom teacher, what they do, create lesson plans, grade materials, grade assignments, prepare quizzes, prepare tests, grade those, submit the grades. She did all of that. But it was, admittedly, for the, the two grade recovery students, and that was for, I'm going to use the term two class periods per day. And again, that's what she did during the 1617 school year. She was evaluated as being highly effective. She was evaluated on the exact same mechanism that every other teacher in the district is evaluated on. Her contract with the district identifies her as a teacher, doesn't identify her as an ESC facilitator, doesn't identify her as anything but a teacher. The, and, and that's both for 1617 and 1718. And admittedly, in 1718, she only had one grade, the, I think there was finally a course code assigned to her, and I think Ms. Troutman was very instrumental in helping her get that. I think they refer to it as unique skills. But during that 1617 school year, the testimony was that she was going to her principal, trying to get a class code assigned, so that there would be something out there, and nothing was being done. It took the second year before that class code got assigned to her. And again, now we have to, we're, we're back to the, the definition of what is a classroom teacher. Again, the classroom teacher is defined by definition, but once again, that definition does not, it, I'm sorry, it describes the professional activity of instructing students in courses in classroom situations, but it does not quantify it, requiring exempted activity be performed, how many hours a day, how many students you have, how many classes you teach. The statute is silent. Does it take two classes to be considered a classroom teacher? Does it take three? Does it take four? Does it take one? There's no guidance out there, other than the fact that the definition doesn't give you that guidance. With what she did for that unique skills class, lesson plans, quizzes, homework, tests, teaching, grades, everything that a classroom teacher does, she did. She then did the ESC facilitator role of pushing into classes, where she continued to teach classes. She continued to provide and, and create the lesson plans for the ESC children, which are the IEPs. That's what she does. The IEP sets out what these kids and, and what they need, and what their education requirements are. She develops those in concert with several other people, but that's part of her job as an ESC facilitator, and to see that that IEP is complied with. She was a classroom teacher in 1617. We would even argue that she was a classroom teacher for 1718, because again, statutory definition doesn't quantify what one has to do other than the professional activity, and she was performing the professional activities of a classroom teacher during both academic
Any questions for Mr. Stivers, or Ms. Smith? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to deny the respondent's exception number two, number two, as to recommendation number two, Daniel Purcelli. And my reasoning is because subsection 3C does not require teachers continue in the classroom the following year, the year it was awarded. And it's undisputed that Ms. Purcelli qualified as a classroom teacher in the 2016-17 school year.
I second it. I, I think, again, I, I agree. I think she was, it doesn't matter if it's one, or two, or whatever, because we have a lot of situations like that, where it's a one-on-one type of situation, and they're classroom teachers, so.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'd like to just add something, if I may. While you were talking, I dug through to find the, the full definition of the classroom teacher, because I'd only written that one sentence down. Classroom teachers or staff members assigned the professional activity of instructing students in course in classroom situations, including basic instruction, exceptional student education, career education, and adult education, including substitute teachers. And I, I think that ESC teachers, it says it right there, so.
Okay, Ms. Bola.
I, I have a quick question for Ms. Troutman. Did all five of these people apply for the scholarship?
Yes.
Because in this one, it says Ms. Pericelli failed to notify school board staff that Because in this one, it says Ms. Pericelli failed to notify school board staff that she believed she was eligible for the scholarship. And I was curious if she had applied for the scholarship or the application came later or as part of this.
She did apply, but she applied, it was rankled for the deadline.
Okay.
But she did apply, so.
Okay, I was just curious about that. And just, I guess, we have differing viewpoints on what a lesson plan is from a teacher perspective and an IEP. But when you say it's a lesson plan, I'm thinking, oh, honey, no, there's a lot more going into a lesson plan than that.
Okay, the teacher in you is coming out, Ms. Bola. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries for one with Ms. Gillhausen dissenting. Mr. Bickner?
And I do have a question before Mr. Bickner speaks. Do we need to make another motion, instructions, instructing staff to, as Ms. Smith said, to give a final order and to go ahead and pay these women?
I don't believe so. I think that may, if you have a different opinion, please tell me. My understanding of my job now is to take those things that you've done today, take the recommended order, take it apart, do those things that Ms. Smith says I have to do to make it fit back together, incorporating what you have, ejecting what is in there that shouldn't be now, and create a final order, which will ultimately be brought back and signed by the chairman of the board. Would you both agree with that, or am I wrong?
I believe, I believe you're right.
Now, whether or not that's going to be an easy task, I've sat here and made prolific notes rather than, and everything you've said, I've written down because it's, I don't see it as an easy task, but that's what I see as what has to be done. So at this point, in my opinion, the hearing is closed, once you close it, and the next step is for me to get the transcript and do what I have to do.
Okay.
Which should take some time.
So do you anticipate this on the August meeting or the September meeting? Or further out?
Oh, no, certainly by the September, but I'm going to shoot for August.
All right, thank you.
We'll see what happens.
This was read into the record. When all exceptions are heard and ruled on by the board, the hearing will be terminated, and the process of rewriting the recommended order to create the final order, which includes all of the school board's rulings, will take place. That process is handled by the board attorney and may take several days. So it's on record that that's what we're doing. You got it?
I got it.
Okay, all right.
Is there anything further from either side? No? Yes?
Just so we have a clean record, the petitioner made an argument about this being untimely. Are you withdrawing that?
Wait, we can't, I can't, would you come to the mic? We can't hear you up here.
I was just saying that the petitioner opened up with saying that this was untimely. So given the fact that he prevailed on most of his arguments, for your record, I figured you'd want him to withdraw that, so that we can proceed.
Well, I think the, yeah, it's moot, really, because the issue as to the untimely is, unfortunately, the statute is very clear, and it says that the school board must do X within 90 days. Unfortunately, it doesn't, there's nowhere in the statute does it say, well, if the school board doesn't, this is what happens. There's no guidance, and that's what several of the cases indicate. And it's generally done on a case-by-case basis, and quite honestly, the fact that you're 37 days over is nothing compared to some of the cases out there where it's 600 days before one's done.
Is that charged interest?
Yeah, it's moot. Well, to give you an idea, I have one from another, one of your counties to the south that took 365 days.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, if there's nothing else to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned.